I will call, I'll call the meeting of the Clatso County Planning Commission for November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three to order. And if we could all rise to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which is indivisible.
We could proceed with the roll call, please.
Christopher Farr.
Present.
Floraic Powers.
Present.
Mike Magyar.
Present.
Katie Pritchard.
Present.
Terry Johnson. Jeremy Linder.
Present.
Jason Crashhour excused.
All right. We've all had a chance to look at the agenda. There was one minor modification made to it that I'll make everyone aware of that under item two, the public hearing regarding ordinance. The ordinance number has been changed to twenty-four hyphen zero-one instead of twenty-three hyphen fifteen. You might want to make that note. But other than that, can we have someone state their opinion about the agenda and whether to adopt it or not?
I move that we adopt the agenda as amended.
All right. It's been moved by Commissioner Powers to adopt the agenda as amended.
I'll say it.
Seconded by Commissioner Linder. Those in favor, please just signify with voice.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Agenda's adopted. This point in time, we'll open. Our county's concern that isn't a part of a public hearing this morning. Are there any members of the public that notified the Community Development Department?
There are none.
And is there anyone in the room who wishes to comment on it? Seeing none, and seeing none on the virtual side of things. This is a legislative hearing regarding ordinance twenty-four hyphen zero-one for legislative Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of this body to hear this matter at this time? And I see none. So at this point, we can move to a staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. For the record, Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director. Each year when the legislature meets, any new land use changes to the statutes that occur, the counties and cities are required to update their codes and comprehensive plans accordingly. We base our report on a report that's provided to us by the Department of Land Conservation and Development that summarizes the applicable legislation that was adopted. We presented this to you in draft form back in October at your meeting, and we are moving forward with amendments based on three different pieces of legislation. One would address replacement dwellings on forest lands to bring those more, those standards more into compliance with existing farm use standards in the EFU zone. Another change that will be occurring is based on House Bill twenty-eight ninety-eight, which deals with the use of recreational vehicles and living in them following a natural disaster. And then the third piece of legislation was Senate Bill six forty-four that eliminated references to the wildfire risk map with regard to accessory dwelling units on rural residential lands. And since that map has not yet been finalized or adopted, what the Senate Bill six forty-four did was basically require accessory dwelling units to meet section R three-two-seven of the Oregon Revised Specialty Code, which deals with building codes. So right now, even though when we expect when those maps are finalized, that we will be mainly in Clatso County in the low-risk category. If you choose to build your ADU today, you're going to have to follow the fire hardening that's in the building code. So we are recommending approval of those three sets of revisions. Again, the ordinance number was changed from twenty-three fifteen to twenty-four oh-one simply because it will be adopted in January of two thousand twenty-four if the board chooses. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any of the commissioners have a question for staff on this? Seems like pretty straightforward situation. I will say that it does seem somewhat unfortunate that the more stringent building codes will have to apply in the interim until that, that map of fire hazard comes out. So I, I don't, I'm not sure that you'd have any insight into when that might happen. Is that something that's likely to come up the next legislative session, or?
They've released some initial drafts of the maps already, probably about a month or two ago, and it does show us that we are most likely going to be primarily low fire risk. But I'm not exactly sure when the maps will be adopted. There are a lot, a lot of other counties that have a lot more concerns about the map than I think we will.
Yeah. Okay. Well, if there are no other questions from the commissioners, I'll open the hearing to the public for testimony. And is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make testimony on this matter? And I don't see anybody, and there's no one showing up online. If you're in there and I just can't see you online, just call, call out at this time with your voice, and we'll give you an opportunity to make your comments. I hear none, see none. So at this point, I'll close the public testimony, such as it is, and move to a discussion from the commissioners if they wish on this matter before we make a motion. Everybody's pretty quiet this morning. I see Commissioner Johnson's joined us, so that can be noted in the record. I'd be interested in hearing a motion on this.
I think this is pretty straightforward. It's pretty simple. So I'll move that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners to adopt ordinance twenty-four dash zero-one as presented.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Powers to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to adopt ordinance twenty-four hyphen zero-one as presented. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
And I got a second here from Commissioner Linder. So is there any discussion on this point, on this motion? And I think not. So at that point, we can go with a, with a roll call vote, please.
Floraic Powers.
Yes.
Mike Magyar.
Yes.
Katie Pritchard.
Yes.
Terry Johnson.
Yes.
Jeremy Linder.
Aye.
Chris Farr.
Aye. So the motion carries unanimously from the Planning Commission. So that's the public hearing. And next is Agenda Item Three, a work session, discussion on amendments to law duck, Article Three, non-conforming uses in structures, regulations, et cetera. And we're going to have a report from staff by planner.
This is David Cook, Clatso County Community Development Land Use Planner. We had taken these proposed amendments to your commission, I believe, two months ago, and received a bit of feedback from your commission, mostly related to the ease of rebuilding in the event of some kind of a disaster like a wildfire, or flood, or landslide, and also some feedback on allowing rebuilding after a property owner willfully, or accidentally damages or destroys, or willfully demolishes an existing non-conforming structure. So in your agenda packet, let me pull up the page. On page, starting on page eighteen of your agenda packet, I've prepared a side-by-side table, kind of showing the existing code and the proposed code. There's a lot of information in there. There's a lot of notes that sort of, you know, try and help elucidate what the proposed code amendments are intended to provide. And if you guys have any questions on it, I'm here to help. I think we'll probably have a lot to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. And I'll just say that I really liked the layout, the way you did this with, with that table you were just discussing, going the existing code versus, and the proposed code, side-by-side like that, made it really easy to, to follow. So if it's been done in the past, it's, this seems a little new and a little easier to follow. So I'm, I'm happy with that. But I'll, I'll throw it open to the rest of the commission to ask questions or make discussion around this. Are there any from on the virtual side? Commissioner Magyar, Johnson, or Pritchard have any thoughts or comments?
I'll have a comment and say that I, I think the format looks great as well. It's, it's really easy to glance side-by-side, so I echo the Chair's comments on that. No real comments on the language itself, but I haven't read it completely clearly. I'm scanning it right now. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Either Commissioner.
I just, it looks like we've done a lot of definition cleanup and some adding, which is appreciated, and then some use of a little more leniency in rebuilding when they can. That's kind of what I sensed from this. Did I, did I get that right?
Yeah, correct, Commissioner. There's a, the section on replacement and damage, which starts on page twenty-eight of your agenda packet and goes all the way to thirty-one. We spent a lot of time in, in the code section there, the proposed code amendments to, you know, A, allow people, allow property owners to rebuild more easily, have a longer timeframe, allowing them to rebuild, moving it from a one-year timeframe to get a building permit to three years, and allowing extensions under a type-one permit process. And then on the Planning Commission's recommendation from the prior meeting on page twenty-nine, we included a code language that would allow a property owner subject to a type-two permit procedure to rebuild a structure that was more than seventy-five percent damaged. Some fairly hefty standards. So I'll kind of repeat the explanation from the top. Again, our, the proposed code language on page twenty-nine was designed to address comments from Planning Commission at the last meeting we had on this subject. Based on our legal counsel's review of the proposed language, this procedure that, that was written into here may result in a de facto variance, but not meeting the regular variance standards and requirements, public noticing requirements and stuff like that. So, I mean, the way I see it, we kind of have two options on the table. One is to, instead of this code language that we have proposed in here, make a reference to saying, you know, if you want to rebuild outside of conformance, based on you demolished or destroyed your property more than seventy-five percent of its real market value, apply for a variance, get approved, and that's how you go about it. The other option is to just kind of remove that section, that subsection from the proposed code entirely, and leave it mostly how the existing code language is now.
Okay. So if I can follow up on what David said. So we did run this by Land Use Council because there is a concern about basically creating a process that is more lenient than somebody who has vacant land and can't meet the requirements. We would have them go through the formal variance process. There's a public hearing, affected neighbors are notified, they have a chance to provide testimony. And there's some standards in the variance process that property owners have to meet to make sure that you're not going to impact your neighborhood or surrounding property owners. The language that was proposed during the last Planning Commission meeting in September, when this was discussed, basically has no standards, no public hearing process, and is really much more lenient to me if I'm the owner of a non-conforming structure and I choose. It's not an accidental fire, wind damage, or anything. This is me making a choice on my own to demolish my building, and then coming back and saying, "Well, I can't meet any of the setback requirements, so I'm just going to rebuild it." So there is a definite inequity built into the process where now, with this proposed language, you are giving someone who willfully chooses to do something, more lenient treatment in how they are able to build on their property than if I have just owned a piece of vacant land and now want to build and. And just letting them go through the straight variance process, or including standards into this section so that there is more equity, and also raising it to a public hearing so that they're almost on par with each other. So those were the concerns that legal counsel had when we brought this forward.
Any thoughts on that, the explanation? Anybody have some discussion around those points?
Well, it appears you put the conditions into the, into the three-one-zero-eight by going to the type-two procedure with a few standards. Did I misinterpret that?
You could choose to stay with the type-two. What Land Use Council has recommended is a two-A, which is the public hearing, which is equivalent to what.
Got it.
The variance process would be.
Yeah, the A.
If we were to change that to the, to a type-two-A, then the rest of this could stay, and that counsel felt okay about that?
I think with what's in here, but he also recommended pulling some of those standards out of the variance so that we have something that says you're not impacting your neighbors, you have to demonstrate that you're not going to impact your neighbors. You know, so for example, I own a non-conforming building that has been on the property line for, you know, fifty years. Now I choose to build it down, or tear it down. Should I be allowed to build again on the property line? Does that have an impact on my neighbors? I mean, maybe they've lived with it because it's been there for fifty years, but they also may have the expectation that once that building is removed, that the new building is supposed to meet the new setbacks. And so you, we want to make sure that we're protecting everybody's rights as we move through this process, and not giving one group more rights than another group.
Sure. Yeah, so my only thought is equity. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, I think that was a good catch by the planning staff and the, and the county council on that. And I, I think it's a good change to make it a type-two-A and to, to list a few of the, the most salient points there that would need to be followed. There, I think, I think you have wording like that on some other provision in this packet, don't you? Because.
Our conditional use.
Somewhere in here, I recall a wording about not affecting your neighbors. I guess on page fifteen of our packet, and it, on expansions, you list some of the things that.
Right.
That are affected. I, I think that's fair to, to all parties, that the property owner that wants to do the building and the, the neighbors that may be affected by a kind of non-conforming building. Do we have kind of a consensus here from the commissioners on, on how to go on that? Because I think that's the only point that's sort of up for discussion here right now.
If I'm understanding that correctly, I'm, I, we would just recommend the two-A in our recommendation, and then that would encompass all the points that, that we just discussed. Is that correct? Or we?
We, we would, staff would still recommend including some standards regarding impacts on neighboring properties that we could pull out of our variance criteria and move, copy over into this section.
Right. In addition, so it would be in addition to the two-A.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, just catching up on the language.
Yeah. I mean, the other option for the Planning Commission to consider is simply just have them go through the regular variance process, which would be the same as anybody, anybody else who wanted to build on their property but couldn't meet the requirement.
Probably cleaner because it's already a defined process, right?
Very much so.
Versus us trying to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
I see Commissioner Johnson's had his hand up for a few minutes. Did you want to chime in here with something, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, I got a question. So is a, say a dwelling is destroyed by a natural disaster versus being, you know, demolished by a, by the property owner, are those treated differently then? So something that's destroyed by a natural disaster, say a, a fire that they had, you know, they didn't cause themselves, are they able to replace that without going through the variance process? Or do they have to go through some type of variance process? You say it's too close to the property line, and they just want to rebuild it the way that it was. What, what do they have to do?
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson, destruction of a, of a non-conforming structure by fire, natural disaster, or other catastrophe outside of the owner's control, we have that proposed code language on page twenty-eight, and essentially, it's a type-one permit procedure. That is, you know, the simplest permit we offer. They have to obtain a building permit for this, the reconstruction of it within three years, or get a one-year extension.
And David, just to clarify, I think in that first section, it does say that it has to meet the dimensional standards of the, of the code, correct?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so we're talking about reconstructing, reconstructing a destroyed structure within the dimensional standards of the building prior to its destruction by wildfire or other natural catastrophe.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds, that sounds fair to me. If someone loses their structure that's been there for a long time, grandfathered in, if you will, that they should be able to replace that within its existing footprint. If you expand it, or maybe you tear it down by your own means, and then want to rebuild it, it seems like there would be appropriate to have additional, to, to look at that a little bit further. So I think I'm okay with it as, as, as the proposed here.
Okay. Thanks for that. Did, did you have something, Commissioner Linder?
Yeah, just a clarification. So when you talk about dimensional standards, if somebody has a non-conforming structure, would say they can't meet the setbacks in the existing structures, being five foot instead of ten-foot back, or something like that? If, if the, if the structure is destroyed by a natural disaster, or what have you, they can rebuild in that footprint where it was? Is that correct? Is that what that means when it's dimensional standards, is where the existing footprint was?
Yeah, that's correct, Commissioner Linder. Same size, same location, same footprint.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Anyone else on that? It's kind of, kind of tricky here that you have the two scenarios, one on natural disaster taking out a building or some other structure versus a sort of planned, or maybe unplanned destruction by the owner. But, but they're definitely different scenarios, and it sounds like the commissioners recognize the difference between somebody that just got hit by a disaster and didn't ever intend to, to change things versus someone who, who may have planned to change the building in some way on their own. So. So are we comfortable with, I don't know, do you want a motion on this, or just, this is good enough discussion?
Yeah, it's just for discussion. And so just to make sure that staff has heard you correctly, was there a consensus on three-point-one-oh-eight-oh to just use our standard variance process, excuse me, instead of trying to create a separate but parallel process? Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
I did have one other question, just related to this, but not, not about changing wording or anything. I was just curious. In the introductory part of this.
they can rebuild in that footprint where it was, is that correct? Is that what that means when it's the dimensional standards is where the existing footprint was?
Yeah, that's correct, Commissioner Linder. Same size, same location, same footprint.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else on that? It's kind of, kind of tricky here that you have the two scenarios. One, a natural disaster taking out a building or some other structure versus a sort of planned, or maybe unplanned destruction of it by the owner. But, but they're definitely different scenarios. And it sounds like the commissioners recognize the difference between somebody that just got hit by a disaster and didn't ever intend to change things versus someone who may have planned to change the building in some way on their own. So. So are we comfortable with, I don't know, do you want to motion on this or just, this is good enough discussion?
Yeah, it's just for discussion. And so just to make sure that staff has heard you correctly, was there a consensus on a 3.1080 to just use our standard variance process, excuse me, instead of trying to create a separate, a parallel process? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I did have one other question, just related to this, but not, not about changing wording or anything. I was just curious. In the introductory part of this item, you, you describe on page twelve of our packet, second paragraph there, you highlight that this section also includes uses in structures established illegally, creating confusion for developers and homeowners. And, and so I get that, that you want this to be code that goes for legal, legal buildings, but they may be non-conforming. But my question is then, what, what happens to the illegal ones? Is there a section of Blodak that deals with illegal structures?
Would you want to answer that?
Sure. Yeah, Chair Farrar, it's my understanding that illegal structures and illegal uses are under the purview of code enforcement. And as they are caught, so to speak, normal code enforcement procedures are enacted to either get a permit for the structure, if possible, or remove the structure, move it to a location where it could be permitted, those kinds of things.
Uh-huh. Okay. Thank you. I just want that for my own edification. I guess that completes our discussion around item three, unless anybody else has a last minute thought, especially those of you attending virtually. Okay, looks like we're, we've got our thoughts out on that. And thanks again for the nice presentation, very clear.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. And so this will come back to you then in ordinance form, probably at your December meeting.
Okay. So moving right on then to item four on the agenda, the project staff report, status report, project status report.
Yeah, so just a few items to note. You'll see that the community plans and Goal Five are moving forward again. We had a couple of work sessions with the board on these two items over the past month. And so they are of a general consensus to continue to move them forward with the latest set of revisions. So we anticipate that Goal Five will be coming in ordinance form to your meeting next month as well. The community plans, we still have a little bit more discussion with the board because two of those members were not able to attend the last work session. But we are anticipating that the community plans will be coming back in January for a formal recommendation from the Planning Commission. Uh, let's see here. Everything else, I think, should be pretty straightforward. The ordinance to adopt the language for the storage supplies for emergency struck, or storage structures for emergency supplies was approved by the board at the end of October. That will go into effect at the end of this month. And then with regard to the housing amendments, we have been working with the board to try and establish a date for a public informational meeting where we can kind of flush those out a little bit more for members of the public who may have questions. At this time, I'm anticipating that that meeting probably will not occur now until after the new year, just because we're running into too many holidays and conflicting events. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any commissioners have questions about the project statuses or stat I? Guess not. Pretty clear. But I'll just forewarn you, for some of you that weren't involved in the process of the comprehensive plan, that Goal Five, that may sound like a pretty benign goal sitting out there by itself, but it's, at least it was massive. It's complicated. So just a warning to give yourself plenty of time to go through it. It's, it's, it's a lot more diverse than, say, Goal, the Goal on Housing or the Goal on Economic Development, or those kinds of things. So I hope we get the packet with a few days of buffer so we can-
Yeah, I, I will tell you, instead of being literally one volume-
Yeah.
-of our five volumes, that Goal Five now is significantly streamlined. And we've pulled the narrative out, as we did with the others, and placed that in a separate background report that you'll have in your packet. And then it's really just the, the list of, the inventory and the goals and policies. And they have been, again, we went through everything, checked for redundancies and things like that. So it is a much more streamlined version than what you have encountered in the past.
Well, that's good. That's good. I like, I like that, that scheme of having a background report separate because the background material is, is very good and very helpful, but you don't need to look at it that every time you're trying to look up a policy or something. So anyway, we can move on to item five, the last item on our agenda, the director's report.
Okay. So most of the comprehensive plan stuff, we've already talked about. We are doing our first advisory committee meeting for the economic opportunities analysis tomorrow, I believe, at either one o'clock or three o'clock, three to five. There is a link that is on the county's webpage on our calendar. So if you wanted to tune in and listen to that discussion, that will be happening tomorrow. And then the, this morning, we held a very initial internal kickoff meeting with Crest, which is our chosen consultant for Goals sixteen through eighteen and those updates. And so we had a preliminary meeting with them this morning just to talk about the steps that staff needs to take to get that process rolling. So we are anticipating an advisory committee meeting sometime in late January that will kick off that process as well. And with regard to Goal Eighteen in particular, Dogami is producing new beach and dune maps, which have not been updated in decades. And so they expect to have class of counties done in March, hopefully, of 2024. And so that would be incorporated into our update as well. We have been doing some work on short-term rental caps. We had a discussion with the board. They are still going through that information that staff presented, and we will have another follow-up meeting with them probably in the new year, but we have not set a date for that. The task force for housing is probably not going to have a meeting now until January as well. So their work is on hold. But we did get approved for the grant to do the infrastructure readiness study. And there will be, I believe, a buildable lands inventory that comes out of that as well. And that is working with the county and the five cities jointly on that grant. So it's a very unified effort. We talked about housing development, just an update on the farm forest. We have our last meeting coming up this month. And then the LCD staff is going to prepare their final recommendations and present, present that to the Land Conservation and Development Commission in January. And then the mass timber code-up project, which was a project, is a project with Department of Land Conservation and Development. They're going to do a code audit to see if there are ways that we can change our code if we have things that are hindering the use of mass timber, which I don't think we have an issue with that, or if there are ways to explicitly include it in the code in order to help encourage housing. And then last, but certainly not least, Julia, our wonderful planning manager, unfortunately is resigning and retiring, and December will be her last meeting. So I really wanted to thank her, first of all, for all the help and assistance that she has given me since I started because I could never have done as well as I've done in this job without her help. And I just want to recognize her for that. And we have hired Jay Blake, who is currently the director for the city of Warrenton. He will be starting on January fourth, and we look forward to working with him. And I'm going to let Julia say anything that she might want to say. Julia is also looking forward to Jay being here. It has been my pleasure and a privilege, and I thank you all so very much, and especially Gail.
Well, thank you. And I think I speak for the commissioners at large here that we all really appreciate how well-prepared you are and your background. The history of knowledge of our county and what's going on here is invaluable to a lot of our discussions. And so you'll be really missed in that respect because even if your replacement's very adept and I'm very well-versed in planning, you, you can't make up for that history. So I, I wish you the very, very best in your retirement. Thank you. Well, with that, we're to the good of the order. Any commissioners have a final thought or word of advice, or? Guess not. So record time, maybe. We're closing the meeting at about ten forty Pacific Standard Time.